Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. I proudly call this meeting to order and ask our city administrator to please take the roll call.
Burghart?
Burghart here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Caven?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Meladra?
Meladra here.
Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin the city council meeting with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask our newest team member, Michael Hoffman, to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a full agenda, but I would like to begin with a moment of silence to honor a friend of all of ours, and all of you know that our friend Bob Untied passed away on March the 21st. He was a tender age of 64. We all know him as the Candy Man, as it were, Graham's Fine Chocolates, and of course, that ice cream store, oh, Graham's 318, all good. The celebration of Bob's life was pretty impressive for those of you who attended. There was a rolling, almost anthology of Bob's life. And as some of you may or may not be aware, he chose to go and open his own business after he lost his father in 1987. That's what inspired him to do what he always wanted to do. He had a job, a part-time job in a candy company. He thought, this is it. This is what I want to do. And obviously, an extraordinary impact in our community. Hundreds, hundreds of high school students worked their summers with the Untied family, and I think most were probably at the celebration. But to his wife Becky and their two daughters and the grandkids, I just ask that we just perhaps bow our heads and reflect on the extraordinary contributions Bob made and let the family know that we're thinking about them. Thank you very much. Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is to introduce and for us to meet our fleet mechanic, Michael Hoffman. Mr. Hoffman, come on up, sir. You and I are cabitzing prior to the council meeting.
Yeah.
It's almost two months to the day that you joined us.
Yeah, just about.
You joined us on February 8th.
Correct.
Isn't that something?
Yeah, time's fine.
Now, according to my cheat sheet, you went to Barrington High School.
That is correct.
For the benefit of Alderman Caven, what is the nickname of Barrington High School?
We Were the Broncos was our mascot.
Did you know that?
I don't know about the nickname.
And another trivia, off to Triton College?
Okay.
For automotive repair?
Yep. Did that in after-hours, once I was done working, I was taking night classes there for about two years.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Long days.
Did you spend time on campus too, or?
Not really. The automotive had its own building, and I was pretty much just in that area.
Yeah. Well, Bonsi's got a heck of a program, too.
It does. It was a little bit further from where I was at, so.
Got it, yeah, got it. Worked at Wheeling Auto Center as a lube technician and worked your way up to full-time mechanic.
Yep. I was there for five years.
Now, this is pretty cool. You worked at the Village of Prospect Heights as the only mechanic?
Yeah, we were very, very small. We had a fleet of about 35 to 40 vehicles, and we only had six public works workers. Everybody had their own position, but there wasn't enough work to keep us busy all the time, so we kind of filled in in every department.
Because it said here you filled in often.
Yeah, quite a bit.
Were you ever the chief of police?
No.
You know that, Mr. Passerelli? So, there's an expression, but perhaps you've heard it. The only difference between a doctor and a mechanic is the language. Would you agree with that?
I haven't heard it, but I could see where that comes from, yes.
I find the whole mechanic thing just baffling.
Yeah.
But you must, it must be intuitive for you.
Yeah, yeah. My dad was doing it for about 25 years, and I picked up from him. I grew up with all the tools in the garage, and that's kind of what led me down this path.
So, just the tinkering and you taught yourself?
Yeah, pretty much.
Good lord. What kind of car do you drive?
I've got four. Yeah, I've got a Nissan diesel pickup truck. I've got two Mini Coopers. I like to buy with blown-up engines and rebuild them, and I just recently got a car with a bad trans from a family member who didn't want it anymore, so I'm currently fixing that, too.
So, to give Michael Hoffman a bad car is really a gift?
Yeah, it's the best thing you could do.
Wow. And these are all at your home?
Yep, yep.
Do you park them on the street overnight?
Yeah, we do have overnight parking. Thank God.
Chief, overnight parking, man.
No, but they drive slowly by the house because there's always some type of trailer or car or something blocking, so.
Obviously, life has changed drastically in the mechanic world.
Mm-hmm.
What is the biggest change, in your opinion, and what's remained the same?
The biggest change, I think, is getting into public works is working on bigger stuff, heavy-duty. I mean, I started out more working on everyday cars, light-duty diesel, stuff like that. But the stuff that changed, stayed the same, I think, it's just the same issues I see, even with some of the light-duty stuff or big-duty, it just seems like most of the repairs are pretty repetitive, depending on what manufacturer, other stuff that are out there.
Now, when someone brings in a vehicle, whether it be the fire department, the police department, public works, whomever, I want to be delicate here, they may not understand fully what's going on. Are you able to say, perhaps under your breath, oh, for God's sake, this is just a flux capacitor?
Sometimes it does bring in like an easy job for us, but unless you do it every day, it shouldn't come easy to everybody, so.
Do you notice, did you know that reference to flux capacitor?
I did, yes, Back to the Future.
Good, good lord, man. Did you?
I did.
So, you lift up, you lift up the hood, you look at the engine. I'm assuming there's an engine in there?
Hopefully, yeah.
What's the biggest complication you've seen thus far being with the city of Geneva?
Nothing too drastic yet. Nothing really too, most of it's just been maintenance stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, just keeping the fleet going. It's in pretty good shape already, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Any big surprises since you've been with us?
No, not yet, not going.
Now, you live in Hoffman Estates?
I do.
And there's no relationship between Michael Hoffman and Hoffman Estates?
Nope.
Okay. You've got about a 40-minute drive?
Yeah, not bad at all, no.
What do you do in your time off? What do you, how do you relax?
Usually, I'm in the garage, working on other stuff.
So, that's cathartic for you?
Yeah, yeah, the day never stops, so.
Really? Are you a night owl?
Um, used to be, not as much anymore, but.
So, you get home from a full day of taking care of the fleet, and then you work on your own fleet?
Pretty much, yes.
Are you working on the one with the bad trans right now?
Yeah, yep, I worked on that Friday, actually.
What kind of car is that?
It's a Nissan Maximo.
Oh, okay.
A newer one, but.
And you have two Mini Coopers?
I had five, but I'm down to two, yeah.
Did you break the other ones, or what did you?
No, I bought them broken, and I had a neighbor that had like an engine shop that he ran out of his garage, so he was doing a lot of the engine work for me, and I was just doing the pulling and replacing the parts. And I was making some money on it and just kind of became a hobby after a while. You find one, and I liked it, so.
So, what's your advice for somebody like me who buys the car, then puts gas in the tank every now and then?
Just stay on top of the maintenance, and you should be good down the road.
Is it really every 3,000 miles changing the oil?
Not so much anymore, no.
Okay, what is it?
It depends what car it is, but it also depends how you drive it. I would say most of it's more 5,000 miles nowadays.
Well, Alderman Swanson drives a Pinto. Any recommendations?
3,000 miles.
300 miles?
Yeah.
We're delighted to have you aboard. Any comments or questions from the council, either virtually or here in the chamber? So, what are you doing tonight?
Probably going home and tinkering in the garage a little bit.
Now, you were talking basketball, are you going to have the game on?
Yeah, definitely.
Who are you rooting for?
Gonzaga. Like to see them win one. They just get so close every year.
And undefeated, too.
Yeah, this is their year, hopefully.
That's awesome, man.
Especially after the one they just had, so.
Yeah, wasn't that great?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Hoffman, welcome aboard.
Glad to be here.
Thanks for being with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time and meeting with me.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, item 3B is to proclaim April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Geneva. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Swanson. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Burghart. Any questions or comments? Big day. Please do, yes.
Yes, happy Arbor Day, everyone. I love trees. And one thing I hope for the city of Geneva at some point in the near future is if we could have some type of registry of, what is it like? Can't remember, it's called heritage or legacy trees, which I've seen some towns have, and it's, I don't know if it's something really formal or informal, but it's just a way to kind of share the excitement if there's a really special tree, a certain variety of tree, or one that's really old and maybe has some historic value, or just to even point out the, like, very interesting variety of species of trees that a particular town might have. So, for example, Urbana, Illinois, has on their city of, city website, their legacy, some information about their legacy tree program. So, in celebrating Arbor Day today, I just wanted to mention that as something I think it would be really nice to have here in the city of Geneva as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Virtually or here in the chamber? Seeing none? Expecting none? Madam City Administrator, take the roll.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
The resolution has been adopted. Nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We move on to item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be enacted with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Burghart makes that motion? Excuse me, Alderwoman Burghart makes that motion. Alderman Swanson makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Whenever you're ready, Stephanie, take the roll, please.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
The consent agenda for this evening's council meeting has been adopted with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump to item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city administrators to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,751,353.69.
Now, with Alderman Bruno absent, who's going to give this a shot? Alderwoman Burghart.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pay the bills as presented. The items that add up to that amount can be found on the city website.
There's been a motion by Alderwoman Burghart to pay the bills as presented, which were available in our packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarog. Any questions or comments regarding the bills to be paid? Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The municipal bills for payment have been adopted with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. We jump down, ladies and gentlemen, to new business for this council meeting. Is there any new business? First, anyone joining us remotely, Mr. McCready or Ms. Dawkins? Anyone in the audience? The superintendent of streets is hot. From the chamber, any new business? From our friends virtually? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this council meeting. Alderman Casarog makes that motion. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, tonight's council meeting is adjourned. Just give us a few moments to transition to the committee of the whole. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's committee of the whole meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city administrator to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Burghart?
Here.
Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Caven?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Meladra?
Meladra, here.
Marx?
Marx, here.
McGowan?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Our first order of business, ladies and gentlemen, is to approve Committee of the Whole minutes from March 15, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Casarog. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderwoman Burghart. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes from the Ides of March? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Item two has been approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Items of business, folks, item 3A is to consider draft resolution, authorizing acceptance of a proposal to bind coverage for property, inland marine, general liability, automobile, employment practices, law enforcement, public officials, crime, cyber, excess liability, and workers' compensation insurance effective May 1, 2021. Is there a motion? Alderwoman Burghart makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarog. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Dawkins for a preamble. Are you going to introduce our guest?
Yep.
Okay. All yours.
Thank you. So, I won't reiterate all of the coverages that the mayor just read to us. So, again, we're talking about all of those coverages. Our current policies expire on April 30th. There was a memo in your packet this evening from Arthur J. Gallagher, our broker, that outlined the renewal proposal for all of these coverages. And then with us this evening, we do have Tia Incaprio from Arthur J. Gallagher, if you have additional questions, or also Assistant City Administrator McCready may answer those as well.
Great. The floor is open for questions or comments for either our guest, Ms. Incaprio, or Mr. I don't see any hands being raised virtually, anyone in the chamber? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Item 3A has been advanced to the city council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item 3B is to consider draft resolution, authorizing purchase of a 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe from Miles Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed $50,098, inclusive of conversion costs for the police department and Michael Hoffman. No, that's good. For the police department only, sorry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Caven makes the motion? Alderman McGowan makes the second. Questions or comments?
Want me to?
But firstly, preamble.
So, although your packet said that the fiscal year restricted police fund budget included two police vehicles, it does. This vehicle is actually the one that's been budgeted in the capital equipment fund. So, it is a 2017 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor that we're replacing. You will note also in the packet that that was recently involved in an accident and deemed a total loss by our insurance carrier. So, the request this evening is to purchase a replacement 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe from the state bid holder, Miles Chevrolet, in an amount not to exceed $50,098, including the conversion costs. The insurance carrier did remit $15,165 for the residual value of the totaled vehicle. We do have Chief Passerelli with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Questions for either the city administrator or our chief of police, Mr. Passerelli? I don't see any hands raised virtually, anyone in the chamber? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Item 3B has been advanced to the city council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item 3C, consider draft resolution, authorizing identification sign easement agreement with the Forest Preserve District of Kane County.
So moved.
Alderman Kilburg makes the motion? Alderwoman Burghart makes the second? Ms. Dawkins?
Thank you. So, to complete the installation of two city identification signs, easements are needed from the Forest Preserve District. Both locations are at Fabian Forest Preserve, one at the northeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Illinois State Route 31, and one is at the northeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Illinois Route 25. These signs are two of the five that have been approved or were approved for purchase at the end of 2019. The easements are to allow the signs to be placed outside of the IDOT right-of-way. City staff has worked with the Forest Preserve to ensure that these signs avoid all potential locational conflicts. The city has also agreed to complete preparation work, modify our landscape plans to incorporate more prairie plantings, and to take on some extra mowing responsibilities. The new signs will be secondary signs designed, scheduled for installation this year. And with us this evening, we do have Director Timoshenko, who can answer any additional questions you might have.
Any questions for our economic development director, Timoshenko, or City Minister Dawkins, Alderman Casarog?
I was just curious how many signs we have left from that 2019 proposal?
We will just have one more, which we're working on that last easement.
Do we know where that is targeted, or are we not?
Kirk and Division.
Where's?
Kirk and Division.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Burghart?
I'm sorry, Kathleen, can you clarify? That's from the 2019, because we have more signs still.
We do have, we do have more signs. We have some signs that we cannot install yet due to construction, so we're just waiting for those construction projects to be done. And then we have one sign budgeted for next year that we're going to be able to put on our own city property, so we'll be able to get that in. And then we'll have, at the completion of that, we'll have all of the primary and the secondary signs that were programmed installed. And then the city council will have to make decisions about the tertiary signs and rehabbing the historic signs. So, we'll bring that forward then in the next budget.
Great. Well, I think they just look great, and I know we've had people emailing us recently asking, when can this tertiary sign be installed? So, people are noticing them, and, you know, they're definitely just a classic look, and I, I'm not saying that because Dean and I were on the committee that helped design them, but I know it's pretty painstaking to work with the, to get these cited and stuff, so thank you for working with the Forest Preserve to make this happen, so.
Yes, they've been very wonderful to us, so we appreciate all the work. And Nate has been instrumental in working on this also because he's going to have the heavy lifting of everything we've agreed to here today.
Well, thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg?
As far as the landscaping and the prep, I see that the sign at Brisher and Randall, it's, it's completed, but there's, it seems like there's, there's a pile of dirt that's been there for about a month. Is that, is that going to be completed at some point in time, and is there going to be some landscaping with that as well?
There is. We have a landscaping that's going in as soon as the weather is ready for it, which should be any day now. We'll check on the spoil pile, though. That was supposed to have been removed, so I will, I will follow up on that with the contractor. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else? If not, a roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins?
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 3C is being advanced to the city council. Item 3D, ladies and gentlemen, consider draft resolution, authorizing execution of a contract with Builders Paving LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,827,000 for the 2021 Street and Water Main Improvement Project. Is there a motion? Alderwoman Burghart makes the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Casarog. Ms. Dawkins?
So the 2021 Street and Water Main Improvement includes roadway restoration, water main replacements, storm sewer replacement, and pavement marking replacements. There was a map that showed the project locations included in the agenda packet for this evening. Five bids were received with a load bid provided by Builders Paving LLC in the amount of $1,687,487. Warm mix asphalt was included as an eco-friendly alternative to the hot mix asphalt for an additional 5602. Builders Paving is the lowest responsible bidder and are pre-qualified by IDOT and has performed satisfactory work for the city of Geneva. A 7.9% contingency budget is recommended to be included in the overall not-to-exceed amount to account for any unforeseen field changes that may occur. I believe that we have Richard Babica with us, Director of Public Works, virtually, if there are any additional questions.
From the committee, any questions or comments for our director, Mr. Babica, or Ms. Dawkins? Seeing none? Expecting none? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Item 3D is being advanced to the city council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item 3E, consider draft resolution, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal from Baxter and Woodman of Crystal Lake, Illinois, for the Water System Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan update at a cost not to exceed $27,300. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Casarog makes the motion?
Second.
Alderwoman Burghart makes the second? Ms. Dawkins?
So all water systems must complete a risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan to comply with America's Water Infrastructure Act. The risk and resilience assessment must be completed by June 30, 2021, and the emergency response plan must be completed no later than six months after certifying completion of the assessment. Six proposals were received and evaluated on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the services. Based upon that evaluation, the top-ranked engineering firm was Baxter and Woodman from Crystal Lake, and staff has met with Baxter and Woodman to negotiate the scope of work and a fee for the project. Again, Director Babica is online with us virtually, if you have any additional questions.
Questions or comments for Director Babica? Or for Ms. Dawkins? Alderman Casarog?
I just noticed that there is a huge difference in the bids for this project, and I was just wondering if there was any explanation or understanding of what, you know, the, I think it was eighty-some thousand dollars versus the twenty-seven thousand dollars. Is there a difference in what we're getting? Or in, were they proposing doing more than we needed? That kind of thing?
Rather him.
Sure, no problem.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. The prices were basically clustered around two ends. You have the amounts that Baxter and Woodman provided, and there were two other relatively local engineering firms, one out of I task and one out of Chicago, that were probably within ten, fifteen thousand dollars. And then there were two that were well out of the upper end of the curve. And in reviewing those proposals, probably the easiest way for me to describe them is they all met the same criteria. But the proposal we're bringing forward in front of you tonight from Baxter and Woodman meets the specifications and needs of the utility, and I would say is comparable to a Lincoln or a- Something along those lines of a vehicle, whereas the two higher end were in the Range Rover or Lexus ranges. So in the spirit of meeting the mandates of the federal and state government and also being good stewards of the resources entrusted to us, our recommendation is to go forth with our proposal from Baxter and Woodman.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Marx?
Marx? Marx, aye.
Thank you. McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Item 3E has been advanced to the city council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item 3F, consider draft resolution, authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Peterbilt Model 348 single-axle dump and snowplows from JX Track Centers in the amount not to exceed $430,460. Is there a motion? Alderman Kilburg makes the motion. Alderman McGowan makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
So the fiscal year 2022 budget has funds allocated to replace a 1998 GMC and a 2002 GMC single-axle snowplow due to their years in service and the number of repairs that have been made to the vehicles on an annual basis. The computer on one has gone bad and the truck no longer runs. The truck is the primary anti- or was the primary anti-icing vehicle, and parts to repair this truck are no longer available. The other vehicle is running into the same issues. While the truck still runs, due to the age of the vehicle, parts are becoming harder and harder to locate. The new trucks will come equipped with a plow, a wing plow, a salt spreader, anti-icing unit, and pre-wet capabilities. Due to the availability of cabs and chassis with a minimum six-month build time, staff is seeking approval to order these vehicles prior to the start of the budget year to ensure they are received and ready for the next snow season. However, we don't pay for vehicles until they're actually received, which would be well into the next fiscal year. The cooperative purchasing agreement is with Sourcewell is being used for the purchase, and then the cost to purchase both trucks totals $430,464. With us this evening, we have Superintendent Landers to answer any questions you might have.
How you doing back there, Superintendent?
I'm doing a little better.
We're talking snow removals. Maybe this will help you. Any questions or comments for the superintendent, Mr. Landers? I don't see any. I don't ex- Not expecting any? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
Item 3F is being advanced to the city council meeting with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. And that council meeting promises to be 102 degrees. Item 3G, folks, consider draft resolution declaring surplus miscellaneous vehicles and equipment. Is there a motion? Alderwoman Burghart makes the motion? Seconded by Alderman Swanson. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so included in this evening's agenda packet was a list of vehicles and equipment that are no longer utilized throughout the various city departments and are being recommended to be declared surplus. Items that have a resale value will be sold at auction, and the proceeds return to the appropriate fund. Again, if you have any questions, Superintendent Landers would be more than happy to answer those for you.
Questions or comments for Superintendent Landers regarding item 3G? Seeing no hands raised virtually, sensing no questions or comments in the chamber? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Item 3G is being advanced to the city council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item 3H, consider draft resolution, authorizing execution of a license agreement with The Birdhouse Lady LLC at 28 James Street. Is there a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion? Alderwoman Burghart makes the second? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the commercial property located at 28 James Street is undergoing renovation and maintenance. During the work, it was discovered that portions of the north side of the building along James Street encroached into the city's right-of-way. The existing structures have been in place for some time, if you're familiar with the building, and it would therefore be impractical to relocate the commercial building out of the right-of-way. Therefore, for your consideration, this evening is a license agreement prepared by the city attorney that would provide insurance coverage to the city of Geneva as well as providing clarification for the maintenance responsibility of the structures that are within the right-of-way. We do have Director Babica, I think, still with us, if you have any additional questions. He would be more than happy to answer those.
Great. Questions or comments for Director Babica? Anyone virtually? Anyone here in the chamber? Who here can remember all the businesses that were in that location? Country House. That's one. Remember all the additions that were put on as? That's amazing. That's kind of an oopsie-daisy, isn't it, just putting on the? Wow. Well, sensing no additional questions or responses to the trivia, roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins?
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 3H is being advanced to the city council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one Alderman absent. Item 3I, consider draft resolution, authorizing execution of the Ride-In Kane Program Sponsor Agreement, effective August 2021 through August 2023, subject to approved funds. Is there a motion? Alderman Kilburg makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarog. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the Ride-In Kane Program provides community access for senior citizens 65 years or older and persons with disabilities, the opportunity to access curb-to-curb transportation services to locations anywhere in Kane County. The program is made possible by federal grants from the New Freedom Initiative and job access reverse commute programs awarded from the Regional Transportation Authority and contributions from participating agencies. Several government and human service organizations have created a partnership, known as the Kane County Para-Transit Coordinating Council, and collectively committed to meet the local match requirements of the grant programs. For your consideration, this evening is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Ride-In Kane Sponsor Agreement for the period effective August 2021 through August 2023, subject to approval of funding each year. So I would note that the '22 funding has already been approved in the budget that you all passed. And the reason it seems like we're doing this early is because they need to have the agreement signed in order to apply for the grant funding. So if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Questions or comments for our city administrator regarding item 3I? Seeing no hands raised virtually? Anyone in the chamber? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?